All right, good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the October 9th, 2025 Apple Valley City Council Meeting. Welcome, everyone. For any members who have signed up to speak, as we call your name, please come forward to the podium to address the council. With that, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask everyone to rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, and Tom, I know you mentioned we have one item to remove from consent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. On our agenda tonight, we have two suggested revisions. One is Item 4K, which is on your consent agenda. We're requesting that this item be removed tonight. This is a change order with McNamara Contracting. There's a typographical error in the document. It's not time urgent. We'll take it off tonight, and we'll come back to you with that at your next meeting. So that is Item 4K. And then the other one is just an updated calendar of upcoming events, and that's Item 7A on your agenda.
All right, thank you. With those changes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel, second from Councilmember Bergman. We do need to take a roll call, I believe, on this item. Christina?
Yes, Mayor.
If you mind doing that for us.
Thank you. Bergman?
Aye.
Hebert?
Aye.
Grendel?
Aye.
Hoopa?
Aye.
Malander?
Aye.
Great, thank you. That item passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is our audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. These items are an opportunity for the council to take input from the residents in the community. However, we don't take action on items that come forward typically at this portion of the meeting. The first person who has signed up to speak is Chris Radford. I believe I'm pronouncing that correct. Chris, come on forward if you don't mind. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Chris Radford, and my address is 14380 Euclid Avenue.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Whenever you're ready, go ahead. Sorry about that.
I'm here both as a resident and as a part-time employee over at the community center, and I wanted to make a public statement regarding the incident of October 2nd. I wanted to state for public record that that traumatic event that occurred on October 2nd was preventable, and security and safety issues were brought forward to management. I just want to make sure that that's available for the families that they need it. And I also ask that you increase the budget for additional staff to supervise youth open gym. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for everybody in the audience listening, right, we have closed the open gym until we can review policies. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is, the next person, excuse me, is Patty Matthews. Patty, would you come forward?
Mayor and council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Patty Matthews. I'm a resident of Apple Valley and a responsible gun owner and a gun violence prevention advocate. I represent over 200 Moms Demand Action volunteers in Apple Valley and over 2,500 across Dakota County. Let me be clear, we are not anti-gun. We are anti-gun violence. As our local leaders, you are the first line of government for our community. We are here today in response to the growing public health crisis and safety crisis. Guns are now the leading cause of death of children between 1 and 18, and communities across Minnesota, including Apple Valley, have seen an increase in gun violence. Recent tragedies have only underscored the urgency of this issue. The murder of Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband Mark, the shooting of Representative John Hoffman and his vet, reports that our own senator and our representatives here for Apple Valley were also on that hit list. Most recently, the devastating mass shooting at Annunciation School and Church that took the lives of Fletcher and Harper and injured 30 people. These horrific events make one thing clear: Now is the time to act. I urge you, as our mayor and council members, to support legislation banning assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, and to pass a resolution that I sent to you on October 3rd. As I outlined in my letter accompanying the resolution, the difference of firepower directly affects the number of lives impacted in a shooting. Annunciation shooter fired 116 rounds in two minutes, killing two and injuring 30. In contrast, the shooting at Evergreen School in Colorado on September 10th, the assailant used a rifle, firing 30 rounds over nine minutes, injuring two but then taking his own life. Additionally, Minnesota Representative John Hoffman was shot nine times but with a handgun, and he survived. Will a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines eliminate gun violence? No. It will reduce the number of lives lost and the severity of the injuries when shootings occur. It's a critical step, one of many, that include improving mental health care, addressing online radicalization, ensuring safe gun storage, and regulating firearm access. As of October 24th, 64% of Minnesotans supported a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. Today, the number is likely even higher. Since the Annunciation Shooting, over 700 Minnesota faith leaders, a coalition of 60 health organizations led by Children's Minnesota, and numerous HCMC physicians have all publicly supported this ban. To illustrate how this movement is growing, within one week of Annunciation Shooting, over 5,000 Minnesotans signed up for Moms Demand Action. By supporting this legislation, you demonstrate a commitment to public safety, not only for our residents but for our teachers and our first responders and families across the community. Representative Robert Bierman asked me to share this message with you. Since 2020, gun violence has been the leading cause of death of U.S. children and teens. Firearms death rates among U.S. kids has more than doubled since 2013. The plague of gun violence is uniquely American. The level of deaths is a public health crisis, especially for children and youth, and our threats to public health are addressed through policies and reduced illness and death. Gun violence prevention should be no different. As the co-chair of the Health, Finance, and Policy Committee, I support the immediate ban on future sale and transfer of military-style assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. I also support the creation of a gun violence prevention subcommittee developed further, and to develop further policy solutions to reduce gun violence and injury in our communities. You, I know, regularly meet with our legislators generally in January of every year. I hope that you will share with them that the residents of Apple Valley are concerned about the gun violence here, and I know that Representative Bierman would appreciate your support on this issue as well. In closing, since the Second Amendment was ratified in 1791, the gun industry has evolved far beyond muskets. Our gun laws must evolve also. Thank you for your time, for listening, and for considering the resolution before you that I sent to you on October 3rd. On behalf of myself and many Moms Demand Action volunteers in Apple Valley and across Dakota County, I urge you to stand with your residents and support a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that. Anyone else who would like to speak to the audience participation portion this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Hoopa, council members, I'm Ann Bailey. I live at 14372 Euclid Avenue in Apple Valley. I am a DARTS volunteer and supporter, and I just wanted to make sure that the residents of Apple Valley know that we have a unique opportunity here at Grace Lutheran Church that DARTS is running, which is a program called The Breathing Space. It's an opportunity for people with memory loss to have four hours of activities while their primary caregivers get those four hours to do their own thing. They have some capacity for participants, so people with memory loss, and they always have a desire for volunteers for those four-hour shifts. It meets at Grace Lutheran Church the second and fourth Mondays of the month. So, welcome this new opportunity here in Apple Valley for our area residents and those surrounding us.
If you haven't already, would you send that to us so we can get that out for you?
Can do.
I just want to say thanks, Ann. What a great program. We took in my aunt, memory loss. She lived with us for three years and eight months, and you definitely need breaks.
Need a break, is right.
Yeah. And we've, DARTS has done this program at a couple of other locations for several years. It's just new to Apple Valley.
Great, thank you.
So, thanks for the time.
Thanks for sharing that. Anyone else? All right, we will move on to our next item, which is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or a citizen requests to pull an item. Councilmembers, are there any items you would like to pull this evening? Citizens, any items to pull? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel, second from Councilmember Hebert. And Christina, would you call the roll?
Bergman?
Aye.
Grendel?
Aye.
Hebert?
Aye.
Hoopa?
Aye.
Malander?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to our regular agenda. And the first item on our regular agenda, it will be a fun one this evening, and that is to reclaim October 11th, 2025, as Dick Tuthill Day. And Tom, you're going to kick us off before we thoroughly embarrass Dick here.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and members of the council and the community. This is an exciting night that we look forward to celebrating. This is a proclamation honoring Dick Tuthill. Dick Tuthill has been an absolute treasure in our community for many, many years, and his family has done some terrific things in our community, and it's our pleasure tonight to bring this item forward to, for your consideration. A couple of just slides that I like to show. There we go. So, this is a classic photo that is the original Dick's mobile station on the corner of County Road 42 and Garden View. The opening date was July 11th, 1965. There was not much in the area in July of 1965. So, there was definitely a commitment to growing the community, growing the business, and we are so proud that this is how it started right there in 1965.
That could almost be a commercial picture, couldn't it?
Yep. Oh, okay. So, this is a photo of the original group of members for the Lebanon Fire Department back in 1966, being sworn in by then-city clerk. And according to the caption, this is Dick, right here, third from the left, obviously going back a few years, eager recruit to the brand-new, at that point, Lebanon Fire Department, not Apple Valley Fire Department. Other classic photos, the department has done a good job in capturing photos over the course of time, and the family has as well, and just so proud to see the history. Apple Valley is not a community that's been around for a couple hundred years. It's been around a little over 50 years, but Lebanon Township certainly dates back earlier than that, and we're just extremely fortunate and appreciative of the work that the early people who came out to this area did to make this community get off to a good start. So, of course, being a high-profile figure in the community, Dick got to be in parades, the Freedom Days Parade, in this case. I'm not sure what year that car is, but it's pretty nice. And seeing the community and being, obviously, one of those early folks who was seen as a leader in the community, as a fire chief in this community, that was and still is a very big thing. He ended up serving as our fire chief for 25 years, from 1969 to 1990. All the while, continuing to grow the business and involving family in the entire business. And so, that is kind of what has happened. Oh, I couldn't resist putting the picture of your cake in there from 25, 25 years. So, very nicely done. And then, as I indicated, the business itself, starting off where it did, growing to the large building, not just a couple blocks to the east of here, and then growing again with the newer building that opened here fairly recently. And just so pleased to see the kind of commitment that they put into the community, the good jobs that they have provided to people to work in the business, the satisfied customers, the quality of the work that is done. And then, the community involvement. And it's estimated that Dick's equipment and the various commitments that they've made around to the different sporting teams throughout, not just Apple Valley but also surrounding communities, that their equipment has taken care of over 100 parades and had featured there to help celebrate the youth of our community and all that they do in growing up in this area. So, 60 years of a business success. I don't know of any other family-owned businesses in Apple Valley that can say that they've been around for 60 years. So, this is definitely a reason to celebrate. On "celebrate" we did on the most recent Freedom Days Parade, this coming-up Pennock. Beautiful truck, beautiful sign, and as they rolled past, you could just see how proud the community is and how proud they are to represent Apple Valley, Dick's Valley Service, and the great legacy of the Tuthill family. And with that, Mr. Mayor, you have the proclamation.
Happy to be honored to read the proclamation, and then when I'm done, we're going to ask Dick to come up and maybe we can coax a few words out of him here. So, whereas Dick and Marilyn Tuthill were active members of the community, beginning in the 1960s when Apple Valley was first being established. And whereas together they ran a towing and auto repair business at the intersection of County Road 42 and Garden View Drive with one truck and two vehicle bays. And whereas, in addition to being an early Apple Valley business leader, Dick Tuthill was one of the Apple Valley's first volunteer firefighters and served as fire chief for 25 years. And whereas Marilyn Tuthill also supported the community through her service in many ways, including as president of the Apple Valley Fire Department Auxiliary. And whereas, from its humble beginnings, Dick's Valley Service has grown steadily over the years and now operates with 33 trucks, 20 vehicle bays, and 60 dedicated employees. And whereas, the company's investment in Apple Valley has also grown, first with a new building in 2005 on the corner of Follage and 145th Street, and later with a second building in 2023 on the corner of Johnny Cake Ridge Road and 147th Street. And whereas, the business remains a family affair, with son Jeff, his wife Lori, along with their children, continuing the business legacy and commitment to tireless community support. And whereas, Dick's Valley Service's commitment to Apple Valley and the surrounding communities continues, as they frequently use their trucks and equipment to support parades, community events, fundraisers, fundraisers, and athletic associations. And whereas, Dick's Valley Service is also committed for supporting numerous nonprofit organizations in Apple Valley and beyond, including serving as the annual host for Rick's Bike Sale, the proceeds of which support multiple local nonprofit organizations. And whereas collectively, Dick Tuthill and the entire Tuthill family have demonstrated the difference one family can make in improving the lives of others while running a successful local business. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Apple Valley, Dakota County, Minnesota hereby proclaims October 11th, 2025, as Dick Tuthill Day. Let's give Dick a round of applause.
Just a couple of words. I want to thank all you people for recognizing us, and hopefully we keep up our good reputation into the future and helping everybody we can. It gives us great pleasure to make that happen. I want to thank all my family tonight for showing, and my friends, and my employees. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick.
All right.
Dick, if you don't mind, I'd love to get us and you and the family in a picture up here, so while we still have everybody. Mind if we come down and do that?
Sure.
You're going to stay here? I guess we're going over there, really?
Come on up. Let's get up here, right in front of the podium. Let's just get right up here, maybe. I think that'll work.
Come on, Goody, get in here.
Come on up. Get everybody up here. I'm trying not to stand in front of somebody.
This thing to lay down nicely so it looks a little better.
One second, here.
Yeah.
All right, everybody got it? You coming up? Come on up. We'll get one more with you in here.
Oh, really?
Oh, well, it's that scary guy next to Great Grandpa that'll scare him all the way.
All right.
going on over at the shop to recognize the 60 years. That information is up on the screen, and I'm sure Dick and family would love to see you over there if you can make it. So, congrats. Thank you for the years of service to the community in many ways. All right, thanks, everybody, for indulging the pictures and the chance to recognize Dick.
And Mayor, we would take a motion?
We should probably, we did all the fun stuff. We should probably take the official action, too, shouldn't we? So, thank you for that. Do I have a motion to adopt that proclamation?
So moved.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Grendel, a second from Councilmember Bergman. And Christina, please take a roll.
Bergman?
Aye.
Grendel?
Aye.
Hebert?
Aye.
Hoopa?
Aye.
Malander?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to 5B, which is the 2025 Special Assessment Roll. And Annie Jo is going to do this one.
He got promoted.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The City of Apple Valley undergoes certification of delinquent accounts twice per year in spring and fall. The process for the fall certifications started with mailing of letters to water and sewer account holders with delinquent balances. A total of 735 letters were mailed on July 29th, an increase from the 581 letters sent during the previous assessment period. The letters informed recipients that accounts not settled by August 21st would be certified for collection, along with a certification fee. Following the August 21st deadline, a certification list was created and presented to the council on September 11th. At that time, the city council set a public hearing for tonight. Additionally, a notice was mailed on September 16th notifying account holders of the public hearing date and payment deadlines. To date, no written objections have been received, and the affidavit of publication has been received and is on file. Following the public hearing this evening, and if the council adopts the assessment roll, the account holders will have an additional 30 days to make the full payment before any unpaid amounts are certified to the county on November 14th. Any amount certified to property taxes will become payable alongside the subsequent year's property taxes. The final list, less any prepayments, will be submitted to the county auditor's office by November 30th. As stipulated by Minnesota state statutes, the initial certification list presented at the September 11th meeting indicated a balance of $192,381.97 across 468 accounts. As of September 29th, 2025, a total of $30,390.69 had been received from 88 accounts, leaving a remaining balance of $161,991.28 across 380 accounts. Since September 29th, 2025, when the Exhibit B item was added to the council packet, the city has received additional payments totaling $9,355.51 from 27 accounts, leaving 353 accounts still unpaid at this time. We anticipate another 25 to 50 accounts will prepay prior to certification with the county next month. The city council is asked to conduct the public hearing where Special Assessment Roll Number 698 considers the adoption of the resolution certifying for collection delinquent utility charges in the amount of $161,991.28.
Great, thanks, Jo. Do we have any questions from council? If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak to the public hearing? One more, one other opportunity to speak to the public hearing. One final opportunity. We will close the public hearing, and we will look for a motion to adopt the resolution levying the 2025 Special Assessment Roll Number 698.
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Hebert, second from Councilmember Grendel. Christina, would you take the roll?
Bergman?
Aye.
Grendel?
Aye.
Hebert?
Aye.
Hoopa?
Aye.
Malander?
Aye.
Great, thank you. That item carries unanimously. And Jo, why don't you come back up for 5C and give us the 2025 Special Assessment Roll Number 699? Do you like how we creatively numbered them?
All right, 2025 Special Assessment Roll Number 699 was just for one parcel of land. It was for delinquent hazardous tree removal and other nuisance charges that violated the city code. So, action request is to hold the public hearing and then adopt the resolution levying 2025 Special Assessment Roll Number 699 in the total amount of $4,676.41 for delinquent hazardous tree removal and nuisance charges minus any prepayments.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak to this item? Anyone who would like to address the public hearing? One final opportunity, and seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and we will look for a motion to adopt the resolution levying the 2025 Special Assessment Roll Number 699.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendel, second from Councilmember Hebert. And Christina, take the roll, please.
Bergman?
Aye.
Grendel?
Aye.
Hebert?
Aye.
Hoopa?
Aye.
Malander?
Aye.
Thank you. That item carries unanimously as well. Our next item, 5D, is to convene in a closed session under the attorney-client exceptions to discuss an amended purchase agreement with Market Properties II LLC for the Central Village West site at 7153 153rd Street West. Tim, anything we need to do before we lift a motion to go into closed session?
At this time, nothing. It'll be just...
So, we're looking for, so I'm looking for a motion to convene in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Grendel, a second from Councilmember Hebert. I almost missed it. Almost got the last one, still missed it. Christina, take the roll.
Bergman?
Aye.
Grendel?
Aye.
Hebert?
Aye.
Hoopa?
Aye.
Malander?
Aye.
That item carries unanimously as well. We will take a brief break, convene in closed session across the hall, and then we will be back in here to finish up the rest of the items this evening. be back in here to finish up the rest of the items this evening.